Wareham Public School District's doctor.
Okay, good afternoon and welcome to the workshop meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Today's Wednesday, July 29th. This meeting is being recorded for WCTV. I don't believe it's being broadcast, but it's being recorded for rebroadcast. So if we could start by with the Pledge of Allegiance?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to start by thanking Sandy Pont for inviting us over to the middle school before this meeting to have a look at the desks and the spacing. That was really helpful, so thank you for that. First on the agenda is the Wareham School Committee Resolution. So we all received this in our email. What it is, is a resolution that was drafted, I believe, by the Amherst School Committee, and since then, it's been approved by more than 170 school committees in Massachusetts. It pretty much just states to the state that school committees will not accept unfunded mandates related to COVID-19. So did everyone have a chance to look at that? Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Okay, so I guess we would just go ahead and vote to approve, or I would ask for a motion to approve it. If we do approve it, we'll forward it on to the members of the legislation, to the governor, and we'll join with the other school committees who are making a similar statement.
Just a point of order?
Mm-hmm.
Just in the future, when we do these, let's state that we're looking for a vote, because it just looks like an agenda item. I didn't expect to actually vote on it.
Yes, so I knew you were going to say that.
Oh.
So I did, I did see that on here, it does say draft to be voted. I know it's not on the agenda, but on the copy that you received, it did say it on there.
Oh, okay.
So it was noted, noted on there. But I, yes, I agree and I understand what you're saying.
But I think there's other items on the agenda that should say vote too as well, right?
No.
Okay.
I don't believe there will be a vote on those items.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, Mary, we're just talking about the resolutions that were sent out. Do you have any questions on those? Did you have a chance to look at those? Okay. So if there are no questions, we'll go out, go ahead and ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, five, zero, zero. Thank you. And I will ask, I will ask to have these posted on the school committee page on the website so that everyone can see what they are. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a discussion on the school calendar for next year. Okay, did you want him to come?
If that's okay.
Before, sure, yep. Okay.
We'd invite Dr. Mendez to come forward so the committee could ask questions if possible. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for inviting me.
Welcome.
Welcome, yes, thank you. So thank you for coming today and helping us navigate these uncharted waters here.
Quite uncharted.
Yes, yes. So first, I would ask you if you have anything to say to us before we ask you questions? Any guidance?
About back to school.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. I apologize, I haven't had a chance to go through the plans in any sort of detail, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So I, well, I'll open up to the committee. Does anyone have any questions from Dr. Mendez?
Well, I guess just specifically in terms of, we're trying to figure out on August 6th, we have to vote for a plan, whether we bring our children back to school full-time, the hybrid model, or stay remote learning. And I know the, I guess the American Pediatric Association has recommended, when possible, for kids to go back to school, citing all sorts of reasons why it's in their best interest to do so. I don't know if you're familiar with maybe the positive test rate in Clinton County or Wareham or with children? Is there any kind of benefit you can give us that we can maybe make a more informed decision? In terms of, I don't know if that's a public health question or a health category question?
Certainly a question that'll change over time as our numbers change. I think, I think part of what we'll need to do to be successful is to keep an eye on those numbers and be flexible as they hopefully go down, or perhaps as they go up.
So at this time, do you think, and I know Massachusetts, based on other states, seems to be doing fairly well, but in your opinion, I guess my question is, is it safe to bring children back to school in the building if we follow the guidelines of the state, whether it's three feet apart with masks or six feet apart?
Yeah, I think if we're really meticulous about what we're doing and keeping an eye on our numbers, we've got a shot at it, for sure.
So we just had the opportunity to look at a classroom that was set up, one classroom that was set up through the desks three feet apart, and then one classroom with the desks that are six feet apart. And we're told that if the desks are six feet apart, then the students will be able to be in the classroom without a mask on. Is that something that you would support?
What grade level is that?
Well, I guess we would hope for all grade levels if possible.
I volunteered in my daughter's first grade class every Friday. It's hard to imagine some of those students remaining six feet apart. I think I'd love to see masks on as many people as possible. I'd love to see as much distance between students and teachers and students as possible. I think it's going to be a challenge. I think for a lot of children, it'll be easier to maintain some distance, but for some, I think it's going to be a challenge.
Right, definitely. And what are you, what are some of the concerns? You must see parents from Wareham all the time.
Sure.
Can you share any of what you're hearing from them as far as the return to school?
Well, I mean, I think a lot of them are really very optimistic and have a lot of faith in, you know, you all putting together a really well-thought-out system. They all understand it's not going to be perfect. I mean, I don't think I've seen anybody who is really expecting some miraculous great understanding of this. They all know that, you know, we as medical professionals have a lot that we still know about the disease, and I think trying to create a system for children to safely be at school. I think they all appreciate how challenging that is. I think they all want for their kids to be in school, but they know that as the numbers change, that might not be possible.
Right, true.
Is that helpful?
It is.
Okay.
It is, yes, yes. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Well, this was a pleasant surprise. I didn't expect Dr. Mendez to be here, and I was just wondering, maybe it would be more appropriate to ask him to come back on the 6th if he's available to answer questions so we'd be more prepared?
We could ask him, sure.
The 6th is next, Thursday?
Next Thursday.
I think I could do that, but I'm happy to answer questions now, too.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Ms. Rossi?
So I know that a lot of the things that are being put out there, whether it's parents are reading things or hearing things from various sources, obviously, a lot of people have differing opinions about a lot of things when it comes to the virus and its effect on children. I had someone well-known to me back in the, sort of the beginning stages of the virus as a teenager, and even though it was a, the test, I think, was fairly new at the time and it came back negative, but everything pointed to things being with the virus. Their theory at the time was everything was exacerbated by the possibility of, like in high school-age children, of vaping, and how that could present symptoms being really bad. This was someone who was intubated for over two and a half weeks, would have normally been a healthy, strapping athlete, no underlying conditions, things of that nature. So I know that people have had concerns and questions about, you know, that, you know, the transmission in children and their, their immune systems being, you know, not as compromised or underlying conditions as much as the, like, the nursing home population. Are you at all concerned of any, like, with the population of kids that are vaping or hiding vaping, that that could, when you bring those numbers back in and that exposure, how that could be handled?
Yeah, I mean, we're absolutely worried about their health. I will tell you that your knowledge and concern of the dangers of vaping and the virus are also, seem to be very well-known to teenagers, because I've had quite a few of them tell me when I ask, "Oh, I stopped that because of the virus." Because you can get rid, seriously?
That's good.
So, yeah, sure, that's a concern. But I do think that a lot of them are pretty smart and they realize that they, they need to either really reduce a lot or totally stop. Is that helpful?
Yeah, I just think that, I think it was one of those points that a lot of parents may not have had that on their, their mind when thinking of sending, you know, the older children back to school. They think that the kids are going to, well, an older child is more able to control themselves, a mask, but I feel that in some of those kind of middle to upper, you know, they're sometimes a little bit, almost more susceptible to peer pressure, and if there is any sort of group activity, or, "Oh, it's fine, this could have been," you know, a lot of them are also influenced by their parents and by what they're reading and seeing on social media, as opposed to the younger kids who just take an adult's word for it with everything. It's like, "You have to wear masks." Okay, that's great, but the older kids that have that access to social media and are more apt to draw their own conclusions, or are more influenced by, you know, influence, actual influencers and things that they're reading or seeing, I just want to make sure that maybe that educational point is brought out to those older kids, because we give, we take them for granted that they're, they're going to be able to handle this, but I think that they are more susceptible to the outside influence of things than some of the younger kids. So I just, health-wise, there's a concern there. That's, I mean, having a student that's in high school, that is more of a concern to me. I know that the younger kids are sort of easier to say, "Okay, you sit here, you do this," and while they may fidget and it might get harder, they're easier to steer back to where they should be, in my opinion. I know that it's not, it is a challenge for a lot, but I, I just think that that's sort of like a, something that really I haven't heard addressed too much when talking or planning for reopening in phases with some of the older population of kids.
Dr. Swan?
Hi, thanks for coming. You said you had a daughter who was in first grade going into second, I assume? Are you sending her back to school?
Depends on what the school decides. Given the option, yes.
Given the option to attend and go, you would send her?
Yeah.
Okay.
As of right now, with the numbers as they are.
It's fair.
And I would also trust that, that the school would blow the whistle probably before I would, as the numbers are starting to go up, and go back to some sort of homeschool situation or hybrid situation?
Oh, we'll be doing remote no matter what.
Right.
So it'll be available.
Yeah.
But I was just curious.
Thanks.
Kevin?
Dr. Mendez, I had a parent on one of our subcommittees ask about, should there be concerns about wearing masks on children for an extended period of time? Are there things we should be looking for, teachers should be looking for in the building? Any concerns from medically regarding wearing masks for, there'd be breaks, but any advice you can give us regarding that?
Not really. I think it's going to be hard for some children who have sensory problems to keep a mask on their face all day long. I think it's going to be hard for some of the younger children to do it. But those things aside, no, I think it's going to be okay. Though I will add that the better the mask fits, the less of a health concern I would have about them. I oftentimes see people spending a lot of time touching their face masks because it's falling off their face. And I think that the more you're touching your face, the more you're transmitting germs onto your face, right?
All right, anyone else?
So assuming we do everything as recommended and people stick with it, and given that, from what I understand, the children are the most resilient, you know, toward this virus, is it safe to say that our staff is still most at risk?
Compared to the children?
Yeah.
I think compared to the healthy children, absolutely.
Yeah.
I think some of the children with chronic health problems might be at equal risk to a staff or faculty member. But I think in general, yes, you're probably talking about age of staff and faculty compared to age of children, and that would put them at higher risk.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much for being here today. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. I'm happy to come back. Next week, I'm pretty sure I'll be able to.
Okay.
Isn't there a deadline, though, for submission of the plan?
Right, our first round goes neck, or tomorrow, actually, the 30, what's this, 31st, yes. And then we, the committee, will be voting on the 6th for the official, which then we have to have submitted by, I think, yeah.
Submitted by the 10th. So if I, we come back next week, that would be okay?
Yeah, so we, like Dr. Shaverhood said, we will be voting. Today, we'll hear more details about the plans that they've been working on.
Okay.
And then next week, we'll be voting on which plan for the back to school.
Yeah, I'm happy to do whatever's helpful to any of you, all of you.
Okay, great, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So we'll move to a discussion about the school calendar?
Well, I'd like to, you know, just bring it up, because this is something that we will need to adjust. At this point, we're still working on it. We would like to have a discussion with the WEA and then review it with them, and then we will bring it back to you for your vote. So I just wanted you to see it and to let you know that we're making some adjustments.
Okay. And would we, do you think that we'll be voting on August 6th?
We would like to do that, and that would, some of it will be determined if we have come to an agreement with the WEA.
Okay. I only, and I understand that piece of it, I'm, my only, the only reason I ask is because I just want to be able to let the families know as soon as possible.
Right. I think there are pieces of this calendar that we will all agree upon. Other pieces might need a little tweaking.
Okay.
We do know that the 10 days has to be used at the beginning of the school year, and they can't transition throughout the school year. So no matter what, those 10 days that the, that the MTA voted or memorandum of understanding with the commissioner, they have to be used at that time. You can't carry them.
So I didn't, I didn't count the days, but based on what day the school year was supposed to start, some districts won't get those whole 10 days, because then they won't be able to start by that date. Is that correct? But because of ours, we'll get all 10 days, is that true?
Yes, which is good, because we could also, we have the option to go earlier in August because of what our contract, the contract says that we can't start before August 24th. So there's the week of the 24th, that's another possible, you know, look, but we're trying to keep things also as much the same as possible. Right, so it's sort of a catch-22, as you start to move it around a bit. But if we go till the 16th, we have the amount of days that we need, and we'll be good with the commissioner, so we won't, and, and the MTA, and the WEA.
Okay, all right. Does anyone have any questions now, based on this draft of the calendar?
I was just wondering what, aside from moving the date with the, with the 10 days, what kinds of changes are you guys looking for with the modified calendar? Like, is it just dates of, like, in-service days? Is it adjustments to vacations? I'm just, just curious of what is still, aside from the, the start date altering, what, what else would still need to be kind of tweaked?
Nothing, no change.
Okay.
Just later in June.
Okay.
The dates, yeah, but no other, we didn't go in and, like, change any of the other structures except what was bargained for this one-year contract, which we removed the January full-day professional development. I don't know if you all remember that conversation, but because November 3rd is Election Day and they use the dekis at voting, if we're back, we don't want kids in the school when we're voting, so we're keeping that day intact for that reason.
Okay, thank you.
And I noticed that, I don't have it in front of me, but the calendar did include the days for MCAS, so that's still on, I'd say.
Right now, it is.
Yeah.
We're waiting to hear if there's going to be any adjustments.
Okay. And do you think that if they do, I mean, I'm just asking your opinion, I guess, do you think that if they do hold us to it, that it'll essentially, it will be the same MCAS, or do you think they'll have to change it some?
Yeah, it will be very interesting, because certainly it will have to be administered at school, and because of that, there may be some different configurations of the test when you look at the cohorts, and also the length of the test. So it would be lovely if they would suspend it, but at this point, there's not been any movement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so we'll move on to transportation?
Okay, so one of the things, and I'm not asking for a vote, I would just like for you to consider this. There are several things on transportation. Number one would be the bus fees. Last year, because we suspended school about a third of the year, so we would be looking at possibly crediting families that had paid the bus fee back with X number of dollars. I think it works out to about $32 and some change. This year, we've started looking, you know, we've started the collection, however, what I would say, because we do not know what form we're going to be coming back to school in, that at this point, we would suspend collection of bus fees, because it seems, I would ask for the consideration of families having to pay for something that we're not going to be able to provide on a regular basis or on a reduced basis. So given that factor, if we could hold for one year, really, it's, in the scheme of transportation, it doesn't add a lot of money to our budget, and it just seems like the right thing to do for some families.
Okay.
Hello?
Mike. Mike, sorry.
Even with the hybrid model, would, would the busing be reduced? Not the price, but the amount of kids bused?
Yes. With the hybrid model, students would, with the model that we're proposing, students would attend two days a week, so they would not be riding the bus the other three days a week, so it would be reduced.
Right, but, but would busing be reduced? Because there's still other kids riding those other days, right?
There, oh, bus, well, on Wednesday, there would be no busing.
Okay.
Or very little busing.
So, so four out of the five days would still be about, about the same amount, I mean, amount of buses running?
Yes, actually, well, that will lead me into a different topic, but right now, we are pretty much at where we were last year. We have one additional bus that will be needed for the elementary run, but we can fit everyone that has enrolled at this point on the buses and maintain the guidelines.
Yeah.
But what we also know is, there's always a number of people who come up at the last minute who would like to have transportation. At this point, we are pretty well-full with what we have and what we can accommodate.
So I guess what I'm saying is, we budgeted a certain amount for bus, for busing, and we're going to still need that, or close to it, and part of that number relied on, on money from, from, from fees?
A small, small portion.
Yeah. Okay.
So with the, the hybrid potential, or the, those families that are choosing to continue remote regardless of where we vote, right now, we've been using the buses to provide breakfast and lunch for students, so would those programs continue for the days that children are home and the days for the, for those families that are still doing remote, would they still be provided through transportation, bus, you know, the buses in those pickup and drop-off locations for the food service every day? Would that be additional busing? Would that be something scheduled in between? Or would that now, like, revert back to, say, pickup at the middle school, pickup at the, at dekis, et cetera, for those families that are either on the hybrid days where they're home, or those families that have chosen to stay full remote?
Our food service has been working on this question, and one of the pieces that we're looking at would be, if we shorten the school day, we can send meals home with students. Now, that doesn't help us with our students that are remote, so we're still exploring how we could possibly send food out to those students. Right now, to run the buses, we need every possible bus and every possible driver. We're, we're looking at what options we have, and we continue to talk about that question, but I don't have a solid answer for you at this point.
Thank you.
So how did we handle it in March? You know, when everyone, everyone was remote, how did they get their meals?
We shuttled them out and had pickups.
Right.
We had drivers and monitors man certain pickup areas. Right now, we'll have drivers and monitors driving buses with students, delivering them home, so we can't really say, "Okay, go to the pickup point at the band shell," because they have to drop kids off.
So, could you do it a different part of the day? Because they're, they're remote anyway.
We could look at that. We've also looked at if we could just make smaller numbers of pickup points. Right now, I think we're at eight or nine. If we would just reduce that to some areas, could we provide meals and people come and pick it up there?
Can you, go ahead, no, go ahead.
And probably just one last question, just, what shape would you say the buses are in this year? I mean, are they, are they all repaired and all ready to go?
Well, I haven't asked that question directly.
Okay.
I do know that we've, I've seen a number of bills coming across for batteries, et cetera, et cetera, and, you know, we purchased a new bus, well, not a new bus, we purchased a bus recently, so we feel like, you know, the fleets, we're building it slowly, but I can find that out for you.
All right, just, just where we've had such a lull, you know, I would hope that we had fixed them and made, during this time, we had a lot of money left over in transportation. We should make sure that they were fixed.
When you say that all the students, you have a spot on the bus for all the students who are enrolled, do you mean all the students who are enrolled in school, or all the students whose families have responded to your request that they register for the bus?
The families who've responded for the request to register for the bus.
Okay. All right. I'm just imagining that there are some who haven't.
I'm sure there are.
Of course.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. April?
Is there a way to compare that list of those who have responded with those who required the busing last year and possibly reach out to those people that had utilized the bus prior? To, I know that, you know, we've all tried to share the survey and the link and things like that, but, you know, those people that either aren't as, you know, text savvy or email savvy, to reach out to them to find out if, in fact, if their child rode the bus last year. I mean, it's probably safe to say that they're most likely going to ride it again this year to find out, you know, so that we can get a more accurate number, if the number is lower than where it was the previous year?
I think we will be looking for some more definite information from parents in the very near future, and one of them, when we've asked the question, "Will you transport your child?" We're about 51% of folks, I believe, that are going to be transporting their child. I would say that's up from last year. So when we ask what kind of a plan, if they're going to choose remote or come back on a modified plan, one of the questions will also include the busing. With the students that we don't hear from, we are going to be reaching out, because we do need this information.
Thank you.
Now, that brings me to my next point in transportation. One of the things that we've always done is offer variances, and this year, we would, we are recommending not to accept variances. And the reason why, it's going to mix student groups, and it will mix cohorts. It also will overload our buses and probably put us to the point where it would be very difficult to transport students, as an example. When we send students and take them to When we send students and take them to the Boys and Girls Club, that takes a full bus. If we operate as we need to, it would take several buses to get students there. It also would mix student groups. So I would be coming out of my cohort, going on with another group of students, and I have just increased my contact realm, which has a real ripple effect. Because once I've increased mine, when I come back to school the next day, or to the Boys and Girls Club, I've just multiplied that. And so in everyone's best interest, and I know this is going to be a tremendous inconvenience for parents, but in, for the safety's sake, I would be asking the committee, and I will be asking the committee, to please vote not to allow variances this year.
So.
Mary. Well, go ahead, you start.
So, I think, aren't there only certain daycares that are allowed to be open right now?
Right now, yes, that is true.
Okay. And then, when they go to that day, I mean, they're gonna be exposed to those kids.
You're right. Yeah.
April?
So for those parents that rely on organizations like the Y after-school care, or the Boys and Girls Club, because they have to work, and that is, I mean, as much as I understand what you're saying about that cohort, essentially, if they're going there every day, it's the same as if they were going home every day. Because even once those students are home, we don't know or have any idea who they're interacting with, what they're doing, if they're in other childcare, if they're seeing other people anyway. So I think that that's gonna be a huge strain on the parents that do rely heavily on that, because they've been asked to return to work. And if those kids have been, you know, that is their cohort every day to do that, I think that some sort of finding a way to make that happen for those parents is gonna be huge. I don't know how, I mean, my son went to the Boys and Girls Club every single day for years on his variance, and I, I don't know how that's gonna detrimental affect how many kids will be able to come to school in general, because that, for those parents that have had to, you know, figure out childcare during this now while school is out of session, it's been, I know it's been trying for a lot of parents who've had to go back to work physically and aren't able to work remotely. So I don't know how that would, how that would benefit if there's such a large portion of kids that rely on being able to do that on a daily basis.
Mike?
I think you answered my question, but if you, if we were going to do this, then with no variances, then I would expect it to be no exceptions. There will be, this will be no variances, period. There'll be no, no claims of, you know, favoritism between this one or that one or anything. So this is just, you know, legitimate for safety, for safety purposes, and it's legitimate. And so, yeah, that, you did answer my question. I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you. Because, because variances are a privilege, right?
They are.
They are.
And it puts a tremendous burden on our organization, our transportation organization, to make it work.
Yeah. And that's why, that's why at our last meeting, I hope I wasn't rude, but I clapped, when Dr. Schwam had said, "We need to educate these students." I'm here to educate students. I'm not here to give them a lift to school. And, and, yeah, busing is needed, and busing, you know, is important. Busing's required, K through six, great. But, but we spend so much time discussing busing when we should be discussing education. And, and I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. April?
Well, at the same token, we are, we had mentioned in previous workshops, working with some of these daycare centers to help us offset the parents working with curriculum and helping to educate them. I know for a fact that the Boys and Girls Club does a power hour where they have tutoring, and they actually help the kids get through their homework, and a lot of the kids that, parents either, it could be an ESL situation, it could be a foster situation where they don't have necessarily the means of the education to help the students get their homework done. In a sense, a lot of those variances that are for after-school care, not just, oh, I'm gonna take the bus to my friend's house today, but for those after-school programs, that helps those students with their education. So there is that line where it's, yes, I could understand not having a variance to go to, you know, John Doe's house after school because they want to play date or they want to hang out. But for those families that require or, you know, really need that assistance that those kids at the Y or the kids at the Boys and Girls Club are providing, and that we had just mentioned in earlier workshops about relying on, you know, speaking to these daycare providers to help us with these kids' accessibility curriculum, I think it's kind of shooting ourselves in the foot to not be able to allow some of those families to have access to that help that these kids wouldn't necessarily get otherwise.
I'm not sure that any of those facilities or many of them will be open.
Right.
Right, at this point, so, I mean, I get what you're, we're saying, and that's sad, that it is that way, but they're, they have to follow some really strict guidelines. I know the Boys and Girls Club is definitely in.
They're open.
No.
But they're not, they've, in the packet, they reached out to them and they're not sure that they will be open.
Yeah. So we're, you know, I think everybody's just trying to keep everybody safe, and it's hard.
It is hard.
And I would agree with everything you said in normal times. You know, there's a lot of great reasons to have kids go to different places, but these are unprecedented times, and we're trying to do the best we can with what we have, and safety's paramount.
And I guess I would just say thank you for bringing it up now, because, again, we could, the more notice that we're able to give the families that may have relied on it in the past, you know, they can make another plan.
Okay. Yeah, well, first, I'd like to invite, if you don't have any more questions about transportation?
Anyone? Nope. Nope, go ahead, we're good.
Special education up, just to answer any questions you may have, and briefly go through their packet information that they provided you.
Were we gonna vote on that? The variance, were we voting?
Sorry? No, we're not voting yet.
Okay.
No. Next time, maybe, we'd be voting next time?
Okay.
I was not instructed to do so.
Okay. So, everybody got a copy?
Oh, first, I just want to introduce Kathleen Bullia, who is our out-of-district and programs coordinator. Just, I don't know if some of you have met her before, so just so that you know who's sitting with me here. And Kathleen and I were co-chairs of the committee that worked on this plan.
Welcome, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
You guys have the new plan, well, not the new plan, but the revised plan. And we tried to make sure that we incorporate everything that we needed to as far as looking at three separate plans, and they are all mapped out for you on charts. So I will, I guess, entertain any questions at this point that anybody might have?
Well, first, could I just ask, you know, last time, your plan wasn't maybe separated by the remote and hybrid. So maybe you could just go over some of the highlights of that, of what you've, what you've changed since last time?
So if you recall, the last time, we talked about the plan that we had created, the draft. We were still waiting for certain pieces of it to plug in. And we also, after last week's meeting, decided that we wanted to kind of look a little bit clearer so that the divisions were clear of what each model would look like. So we changed the format of it a little bit to add the pieces that we had spoken about last week. The preschool piece was added, which, as I said last week, was happening after the preschool meeting on Monday that the state had. So they plugged their pieces into that plan. With the help of the committee, we did all the edits on that. We finally got the links for the protocols, the medical protocols that we were waiting for from the CDC. Those were plugged in, and we also have the plans from the buildings that we took into consideration, and we're working together with the principals to get all of those plans in line. So now it's divided by three different plans. It discusses our students in the three different scenarios. It also discusses all the ancillary services, and they're divided by ancillary service as some of them, you know, have to have more contact physically with students. And it also includes our ELL students there. And then we also created potential cohorts for whatever model we're gonna use to open with.
Okay. So, so I see under each building, there's a special education piece now, so thank you for that. So is your?
The principals did that for us and their committees.
I'm sorry?
The principals and their committees are the ones that created those plans.
Oh, okay.
We just plugged them into our, so that you can kind of have a big, comprehensive view.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. So this doesn't just apply to the special ed plan, it also applies to all the plans. So I'm just wondering if it makes sense, because in here, you know, it talks about visitors to the building, items from home. Does it make sense to just have that in one section instead of, like, there's, I think the only other one that does that is in middle school, like, no sharing materials. I mean, does it make sense to have just that for the whole district on that? And then another question I have about the preschool one is, why is it that we wouldn't include the peer mod, peers in the remote?
Can't hear, can you just?
Sorry.
I just can't hear you.
Why is it we wouldn't include the peers in the remote learning?
So in the remote learning model, we're trying to create an environment where we have as few students as possible. So we're taking what we've been directed to take by the state, which is the high, the highest need students who require that 80% time with services. And this is, again, just a draft, but we decided after guidance from, at the state meeting, that we wanted to make sure that we had as much distancing and protection as possible by not including the peers if that was the model that we decided to go to. Just because it creates less students in the classroom, less necessity for us to have to maybe go into other rooms or break the cohort down even further. So it was really for safety reasons.
I think this, this is for remote learning, not for the hybrid.
It's for the remote, correct?
Yeah, but so, so I don't understand, though, because I think what concerns me is, one, they won't have any typical students interacting in Zoom or whatever. And the other thing that concerns me is equity for, between teachers. So that means these teachers would only be responsible for, like, a handful of kids compared to other teachers who are responsible for a lot more.
So, again, we took the guidance that the state put forward in that meeting that was attended by two members of our preschool staff, Anne Marie Fillion and then Nancy Tavares, who handles all of the meetings for the preschool, attended that meeting together. And this is the guidance that they received, so this is what we put in our proposal. Certainly, we talked at great length about peers, and it's not necessary that peers wouldn't be included in a remote, remote learning virtual sense, but they would not be included in any services that are happening in the building for that population of students.
Right, and I understand that.
Yeah, so it's not necessary that we would say no peers are going to participate in the virtual pieces. It's, it's just our means of trying to protect the students that are coming in that we're required to provide the services for.
And one last question about the preschool plan. So where does the early intervention and all the referrals that are coming from early intervention, and also, I know that we used to do home visits and all of that, where does that come into play?
So there is a link on this that takes you to a specific early intervention piece. Because we're creating a plan for pre-K to 22 for this draft, we did not include the early intervention piece in this document because it's not something necessary that happens on our property or that we're necessarily 100% responsible for. We have already, are in discussions about what, how that's gonna look as far as our evaluations and that transition from early intervention into our school systems. And we're setting up protocols for that right now for how we might be able to get that moving over the summer. So we're kind of in planning stages of that, but right now, our, the thing that's taking the front seat is clearly coming up with a plan to bring as many of our students back as safely as possible, so that's.
Okay.
But we, but I know that Anne Marie and Nancy and Bethany were working very closely with the early intervention people to kind of figure out what our game plan is once we were able to get students in the building. And they do have plans, and they're working on a draft of what that testing and evaluation plan will look like in that transition plan from early intervention into our school system.
All right, thank you. Ms. Rossi?
So, hi, so I know from having subbed in the, in at least the middle school, and from my experience with some of the classes that you're talking about that are the more, the higher need, that I know you want to get a higher percentage of. A lot of those students, one, have the highest sensory issues, which would be a concern with keeping them masked or their ability to be masked. Some of them are runners, where they frequently try to or attempt to leave the classroom and need someone to, you know, kind of keep, keep them under bay. Or some of them have other things where they're not gonna be as compliant to some of the restrictions. So what is the plan for those specific, that specific cohort of students that require that almost slightly extra? Will there be extra, you know, kind of apparel? Will it be the ones-to-ones with that? How is that gonna be handled? Should they, you know, you know, bolt from the classroom? Are those kids are more adverse to drastic changes in routine, which obviously, this is a huge upending on their routine? So what is the, what is the plan for those students?
So the BCBA is our Board Certified Behavior Analysts have been reaching out to parents and sending social stories, especially to a lot of our younger students, and our students who are in the population that you're discussing, to kind of help them practice at home. They've been working with parents about practicing at home with mask wearing. Clearly, any student who is not able to wear a mask because of a health concern, or we have a medical note saying that a student cannot wear a mask, then we would take that into consideration on an individual basis. But our expectation is, as many students who can wear masks would wear them, and that the staff would be modeling that. We do have special masks for our ASD programs that are clear that we have ordered. So that, because it's very important for those, that population of students to be able to see facial expressions, and I think feel less threatened by this, and more by being able to see somebody's actual face and make that connection. So we, you know, I think we're taking a lot of things into consideration. I think the beauty of the cohort model that is in the packet that you all reviewed is that it breaks even those small group classrooms down to be even smaller to address all of these things that you're concerned about, because they're all things that we've already thought about. So we do have protocols for the mask wearing, for the hand washing, for the bolting, for what happens if we have to put, you know, if we have to take somebody and say, no, you cannot elope from the classroom, little one, you need to stay in here. Like, what does that look like? What PPE do we need to do that? So those are all pieces that are coming together through our crisis prevention intervention and our safety care trainers, getting information from those agencies on what we need, and that's all the stuff that we're gonna be making sure we have on hand. And those groups will be very small and manageable, because if we have a group of eight, that would be a group of four, or a group of 10 would then be a group of five. So all of those teachers have peer professionals in the classroom with them to assist, so.
Okay, and one other question is, what is the possible plan, and this could be district-wide, for any student that, you know, in, not necessarily in the special ed classroom, but in some of the regular matriculation that would exhibit any sort of defiance, or taking their mask off at school as an act of, you know, protestation or anything like that? What is the, the protocol for any of that situation? Not that it might necessarily come up, but if a kid is like, you know, you know what, I'm not wearing this anymore, you know, as an act of defiance or of whatever, what is the protocol for going forward? Is that a disciplinary action? Is that a, the parent then has to get the kid, they now have to do remote learning? Is that something that has been considered in the plans for all schools as well?
It has.
It has, and when we go through the slides, I think I will answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Just, it seemed under the special education, it seemed like you put a real emphasis on, on making sure the kids are here, especially in the sub-separate groups. And I like that. No matter what model we chose, even like full remote, you wanted to get the kids in. And, and I appreciate that. And I also, I just want to say, I appreciate everybody, all the administrators that put all the time and effort into this. Just, you're here first. I just want to share with you, when we were sent this by the superintendent, what she had written, she just said, hello. This was yesterday. Hello, Natasha's the information for your review prior to the workshop. These documents represent a tremendous amount of work which has been done in a very short period of time. I am extremely grateful to our administrators and staff for their hard work and diligence. And I know, you know, she feels that way all the time, I know she does, but when she goes out of her way to say that, I appreciate it even more, because I know this was a ton of work over these past three, three workshops. And it's just, you know, evolving, and I just want to say, I appreciate that, so everybody that worked on these, thank you. And I just want to say I appreciate that to everybody that, that worked on these. Thank you.
Dr. Schwann?
I just wanted to mention that we're, we're having some professional developments, a pretty intensive professional development to help, first, a leadership team, which is a large group, about 30 of us, will be meeting next week for three days remotely, of course, with a really great presenter who will help us to determine how to handle behaviors under trauma and the stress of the COVID virus and the different signs that we can look for and how we can maybe help to read students better with their eyes, teach them how to read us better with eyes. Like, there is just a lot of concerns overall, but I think we're trying to get ahead of it by at least arming people with some skills and strategy so that maybe we don't have that happen quite as often, right? Because I think that would be the goal.
I just have a couple of questions. What would you say would be the biggest difference between, for, for your group, between remote learning in the spring and remote learning in the fall?
I mean, I definitely think that we're more prepared. I think, you know, especially with the teletherapies for our students, now that we have kind of vetted platforms that are secure, now that we have a better understanding of, you know, what trainings, different disciplines, speech and language, occupational therapists might need in order to be allowed by their governing bodies to do teletherapy, having more time to research what teletherapy looks like. I think it's put us in a better place to be able to deliver a lot of those services virtually, just through the research that we've done, you know, looking at other districts. I think the tremendous collegiality that we've been able to have with other districts around us, talking to them about their plans, about how they're handling situations. I think, I would say Cape Cod Collaborative has been a tremendous resource to us because they actually have students in their buildings right now. And so we're kind of learning and touching base with them. And I know Kathleen spends a lot of time meeting with their special ed director to see how our students are doing there, what their feeling is done really well, what they're struggling with. So it gives us a little bit of an insight into what we might be facing so that we might be a little bit better prepared.
I also think, over the summer and since March, I've been in touch with families on a regular basis for our students with extreme needs. And it gives us a lot of information on what the families themselves are dealing with on the other side. So it helps us understand how difficult it is and, and the challenges that have arisen as a result of these virtual, you know, platforms. It's really helped kind of identify what to do, what not to do, what to look for, how we can do it differently. I think being in touch with the families of these students on an ongoing basis has really provided a lot of information as well.
Well, a good thing that came out of it, that is, it sounds like, yeah. And what will be your biggest challenge to hybrid learning? I'm going to ask everyone this.
We lose, we lose sleep over this. You know, I, I, my goal is to make sure that everybody is safe and that we're able to provide as many services as possible. So all of the things that I worry about, and I know Kathleen worries about, are the things that Ms. Rossi was talking about. What if somebody rips their mask off? What if somebody throws their mask on the floor and says, "I'm not wearing this"? Like, what if? So it's all those what ifs. I think that, I feel good about the place that we're in as far as our planning. I think our plan is as solid as other plans that we've seen. I'm not feeling uncomfortable. I think that we've done a thorough job of, of creating a plan. And now I think the biggest concern for me is all of those what ifs. And we get a lot of them. We have a lot of conversations with parents. And those are the same questions that parents ask, a lot of actually what April was asking. A lot of those, what if my child does X? What if my child? We don't, we're going to have to, you know, go with the flow and handle it as it comes at us and, and we don't know what's going to happen. So we have to make a plan and do the best we can to keep going.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to invite the principals and assistant principals to come up. And you've received their plans. If you have any specific questions, they'd be happy to answer them. And if not, then we'll go into our slideshow.
So could, could we just ask first if there are any changes that have been made since last time? Any?
So for mine, in my plan and the in-person plan that I emailed you separately, because I didn't, my laptop had died and I didn't realize it didn't go through, I added the six feet requirement for desks. So you can see how many additional teachers and classrooms we would need. And then on every piece of it, I added in the special ed numbers. And we went through with my special ed team, student by student, looked at their services, how many needed ELA, math, pullout, inclusion, and what that would look like for us and how many we could have in school versus remote. So the special ed piece for us and what each plan meant, that's new for mine, and I think probably all of us, we all included.
Yes.
The special ed piece this time.
So you talk about the six feet. So if we were to be hybrid, could mine it be six feet apart in all the classrooms?
I need additional five teachers in four classrooms. That would be very difficult to do in a hybrid model.
Okay, so, no.
And we have a, we need some storage, because I think you went to middle school classrooms today? If you come to elementary, we have a lot more things. So a lot of things have to be removed from the class, packed up and moved out.
Okay, questions? Mary?
I may have missed it, because it's a huge document and I kind of skimmed it. But was there any mention of substitutes, the plan for substitutes in here?
I've done so many plans and they've been in, probably at one point there was, but I know Dr. Shaverhood has mentioned before, we're looking to have possibly, yeah, in one of these versions, it was there. We're looking to have double the number of permanent intimate and substitutes that we have now so that we have a core group of people that we know, rather than someone coming from day to day, someone that's vested in our school. So we're hoping that we will be able to add on to what we currently have.
Okay. I know some districts are actually considering using their specialists for subbing.
Yeah, we have to be very creative sometimes, even without COVID-19 when flu season hits, so.
Right.
We will be using other staffs if needed.
So I know that today, I believe at the State House, a lot of school nurses statewide have been kind of protesting the possibilities of going back to school. I would be interested in knowing if you guys have spoken to our school nursing staff, where they stand, and if they would be able to come and answer any questions about their concerns? Or do we have a plan in place for help for them? Should they require, obviously, there's, I know that there's one nurse per school and with all of the possibilities of, you know, anything with exposure or any, you know, with the, even some of them that are distributing meds to students every day to help with parents or, you know, helping with, you know, different things and that nature, just the everyday, kid's got to go to the nurse type of situation. How is that going to be, and is that indicated specifically in the plans? Or do the nurses have their own plan per building?
We've been working in smaller groups with the nurses and I would ask if they would be willing to come and talk with you. I know that Mrs. Akins was thinking about coming tonight, but something came up. Obviously, once we have a direction that the committee has committed to, then we'll start putting the nuts and bolts together. We know that we're going to need some funds and we're going to be looking at where do we possibly secure this money to hire additional staff that we need. We're going to be needing support at the restrooms with monitors. We're going to need help with cleaning the buildings and with the substitutes. And that's just right off the top of our heads. As we get into this, we know that there is going to be additional needs, such as storage units. We've been looking at bringing in the large containers. So we have furniture that needs to be moved out of the buildings and stored. So we're trying to get a plan that we know we're going to go with and then we're going to start putting all of the nuts and bolts in.
Mary, do you have a question?
For storage, couldn't we use the buildings that are empty?
Some of the buildings have quite a bit of items in there now. One of the things that we've been able to do at Deccus is get a dumpster. And as they've been cleaning out and will continue to clean out, we've asked them to get rid of it, because we're not moving it to the new building. So it's been a plus in a way.
I think too, when you look at what it actually costs in man and women hours to move the stuff out of the school, bring it in another school, and then at some point in time, bring it back, it's actually cheaper to rent a, you know, roll-off and lock it in there for a year because all that stuff has to come back at some point.
Right.
Regarding the hybrid model for the schools, so we saw the middle school today. You said you could get six feet apart if we did the hybrid. Mine, you said you can't without additional five teachers, right, in four classrooms? Scott, what was, what's the state of the high school?
Yeah, we cut teachers. It'd be very difficult to do that with what we have for staffing. There would be some classes that we could reach the six-foot threshold, but there's many other classrooms that we just couldn't meet the six-foot threshold. We're going to try, someone, I was in a conference yesterday and someone said, "Four-and-a-half-foot threshold is what we're shooting for." And I said, "Oh, I never heard that one before." But I, I think, you know, once we figure out who opts in, who opts out, I think we'll be able to get close to six feet in most of the classrooms, but it, it's just impossible with the enrollment we have and the size of the building to make that happen. But obviously, we will strive for as close to six feet as possible and hopefully, we can get, you know, to 90% of that.
So even if we did the hybrid and we went six feet in the classroom, when they go to the bus, it's back to three feet, correct? With a whole different cohort of students? Okay. In Deccus, do we know if they can do six feet or they probably can't?
Deccus is planned for six feet. And Mrs. Chandler had a vacation plan that had been planned for a long time, so that's why she's not able to come today.
So, so with mine, possibly for the six feet required, you know, needing extra space, and I know that the middle, because you guys are sharing with the middle school essentially, I know that with, when we had the cooperative school across the parking lot, and I know that that building is sometimes still utilized, is that something that's an option that's being looked at to how, to house any additional classrooms? Or is that not able to house classrooms at this point? Whereas it's on that property across, in the same parking lot?
Right, right now, we have not explored that area just because of some of the work that we would need to do to that building.
There's no, there's no fresh air makeup in that classroom, in any classroom in there. And the heating bill is out of sight as far as the cost to heat that place.
All right, let's let Joan, are you finished, Joan, with?
Yeah, the only thing I would say, you know, with the middle school is they'll be using like all the unified arts rooms for the classroom. So that's how they can make that work. And if we're in school full day, unified arts would have to be in the classroom. There wouldn't be space to do that. Plus, we're not having students move, so. We're fault at the middle school.
Okay.
So yes, starting with the middle school, did I, did I read correctly that, so if you go with the AB, the hybrid model, that you'll be choosing kids like in each cohort, you know, by ability, kind of, like, not just alphabetically?
No, we didn't specify how we would separate students into cohort. They're scheduled right now into cohorts. How we would, how we would break those students up to do Monday, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday, we hadn't yet determined.
Okay, all right, because then I did notice that the high school is just doing it alphabetically. Is that, is that prudent?
There's no, at the high school, there's no easy way to do it. Grades are mixed with electives and we're doing enrollment, students eight through 12. The grade, it's not, you can't do it by grade level. So we felt that based on the current numbers, which will come down a little bit, doing the A through J and K through Z would be as close to a 50-50 split as we couldn't make it happen and make it clear. The, and then from there, we would dissect each class to see where the numbers are. And we do have some flexibility to use some of the common areas that we have discussed in previous meetings if we had a large group, like we could have, because it's not going to be a clean, if you break it like that, the English 10 class isn't going to be 50% coming in on one day. It might be 60% Monday, Tuesday, and 40% Thursday, Friday. But again, we would dissect that once that decision has been made to make sure we make adjustments. And we do have classrooms, as you've probably seen, that fluctuate in size. So we would have some flexibility to move classrooms. So teachers could rotate around based on the size of the cohort they're teaching to make sure we get, again, as close as we can to six feet with as many classrooms as possible.
All right.
I'm sorry, Mike, I promise you can ask all your questions, but let's try to go school by school first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I just try to make it easier.
All right. So we were with Joan.
Yes, do you have any more questions for Joan?
No, you guys, you know, you guys have some questions to Joan.
Okay. Anyone else?
If we have a question that pertains to all schools.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Okay, can I just have one then while?
Sure, go ahead.
So I noticed in some of the plans that there was reference to teachers teaching in their classroom, if we were doing remote or possibly hybrid, well, couldn't be hybrid, but remote. Is that the plan in all the schools right now?
One of the issues that we will be discussing with the WEA will be teachers that have requested and can provide medical documentation of why they're remote. We will be discussing the location of where teachers and pairs will be housed.
Yeah, everything that I may have put in mind is proposal at this point, because nothing's been finalized.
Okay.
Same at the high school. The, you know, the, the hope is that because it's content-specific, that a teacher could be for a period as part of their duty to, to teach an online class versus an onsite class.
I guess I was referring to anyone, though, that was remote. If we decide to go remote, would teachers be teaching from your building or from home? Would that be negotiated?
That would be negotiated.
All right, so I guess I'll only ask one question, just in the interest of time. So what would be the biggest difference between remote in the spring and remote in the fall at mine?
More active teaching with instruction. You know, we kind of, we were great as far as getting everything together as quickly as we did and we had Google Classroom set up. We had special ed teachers that were in Google Classroom to support students, but there has to be more direct teaching by the, the staff members.
All right, thank you. All right.
Sorry. So with the, both the hybrid and the remote learning, with, in regards to like the, the tech staff that we have throughout the district, would that be something like per, you know, for each building? I know you guys each have your, your own staff of tech people to help with, address with Chromebook concerns and, and hotspot. I know we were able to, as a district, provide that, which was amazing. And I thank all of you for, you know, getting that accessibility to so many kids. Would that be something where that would be additional staff would be, you know, looked into for each building? Or is there enough, like, say backups or a Chromebook dies or things like that? I know we had the luxury of being able to be pretty much one-to-one. But if, if it's hybrid and it's half online and ha, or all remote, they're going to be relying still very heavily on all of that technology. So per building, is there enough staff and equipment that, you know, it was one thing using it for the spring in the hopes that it was a short-lived, you know, experience for our students, but going forward, knowing now that this is, we don't have a foreseeable ending to how this is going to play out with the pandemic, how that's going to affect our ability to still have that technology available for all students in all buildings?
Yes, one of the things that we've been looking at, and we've ordered our Chromebooks. We have a couple of grade levels that need to have new Chromebooks issued just because of the age of their Chromebook. Those have been ordered and we've received a partial order in. So they will be distributed to students. As we journeyed, as we took our journey down this road, one of the things that the teachers said would be, it would be wonderful if we could have a small group of Chromebooks that would stay in the classroom and that way, students are not required to bring them back and forth, especially at the younger grades. So we needed to make an order for teacher Chromebooks. We put it in, we expected the, I believe, the first part of September, they should come in. And with that, then And with that, then we're going to be re-looking at the teacher Chromebooks as we bring them in, how they can be divvied up to the classrooms. And as we took our journey a little bit farther, we jumped on an opportunity to make a major order of Chromebooks, and unfortunately, so are many other schools. And right now, we're looking at probably mid-October for that order to come in. And I ordered, I believe it was about a thousand Chromebooks. And so when I have that order come in, then we will be looking at how we redistribute some of the older Chromebooks that our students have, and then redistribute it to the classrooms. So it is our hope by November that we should be providing students with technology without any little glitches and allow Chromebooks to be operating in the classroom. We've also made an order of iPads that will be distributed to all preschool students and kindergarten students, so they will be one-to-one as well. As far as the tech staff, that's a conversation we're having right now. We know it's a whole different ballgame as far as the support. Last year, they did a, a great job in keeping everything up and running, and that would be our expectation. What we're looking at is, since we will be operating from the buildings as well as poss, as well as remote, if we would go down in a building, do we have the support there, but also to help with the remote? So we may be looking at providing their funds available to hire some more tech people. As far as the hotspots, we did not return any hotspots to T-Mobile, we've kept them, and we will be redistributing to the folks that need the internet access.
I heard of a promotion, a program, I know that I think Tufts Medical Center is partnering with a Boston radio station to try to raise funds to be able to get Chrome, it's called Chromebooks for Kids throughout the Commonwealth. So I don't know if that's some sort of avenue we can look at for grant, I don't know if that's grant fund, it's all donation, but I don't know how a district would go by looking into getting that provided. So I, I had heard it on the radio this morning, and I was like, oh, that's, that would be wonderful if they are able to successfully raven, raise enough funds through this radio station and through Tufts Medical Center to be able to distribute them to every district in the Commonwealth. So I don't know how, I don't know if they're reaching out to superintendents or if someone has to kind of put the, you know, kind of the work into looking into that, but when I heard it this morning, I was like, oh, that's a wonderful idea. So I didn't know if that was something you guys were aware of or that we could look into as well.
Yeah. Well, if I'm not mistaken, we also, that was what the notification today from Senator Pacheco's office addressed, was technology.
We just received a grant of $62,000 through a bill from Senator Pacheco. You know, because we've been one-to-one for a number of years, we're in a little bit different spot than some of the other districts. In fact, the spot that we're in, once we get our large order of Chromebooks in, we really hope to be able to sell some Chromebooks to other places that are looking to make purchases.
Oh, awesome.
And make some money.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to the middle school unless anyone else has any other questions.
Is it in the middle school?
Middle school, yep. Go ahead, Mike. Go ahead.
All right. And then there's some lines, some lines will probably be blurred, I think, there's a lot of the stuff in the middle school that's in the high school, so if anyone wants to answer, but am I reading this correctly under the hybrid? Directly, delivery of curriculum, at least two lessons, direct instruction weekly, then it says, "Each lesson, a minimum of three minutes and a maximum of 15 minutes?"
Yes, and that is...
That sounds like really, really low.
What it's meant to bring about is to prevent a teacher from doing, you know, a 45-minute lecture that kids just zone out of, and this idea of, just like in your classroom, when you do your lesson in chunks and then you check for understanding, that we need to incorporate that as well. And so we really wanted to put that across. Those numbers came from, actually from the teachers on our committee, in terms of the minimum and the maximum, and just the idea that, you know, it's gonna take you three minutes to engage them at least, but if you go past 15, you've zoned them out. So maybe you, maybe your entire lesson is significantly longer than that, but that would represent kind of the chunks of the lesson.
All right, all right, so that's where I was confused, I think this is like three to, three to 15 minutes of actually speaking and instructing versus, you know, sitting in front of the teacher, right? Like, how long, how long would a, a kid be in front of a teacher?
57 minutes.
57?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, oh, yeah, so, and then break it up into chunks up to three to 15 minutes and, okay, all right, I'm glad. All right. I can, I can wait if anyone else has more questions.
Okay, does anyone else have a question?
Well, just related to the, I know that accountability and grading's been an issue, we've heard that from all the principals based on last year, and a lot was kind of pass/fail last year, and you're looking to kind of ramp it up a little bit this year. I noticed in the middle school, it talked about giving formative assessments, which I think is great, because kids need that feedback, but then you said it was gonna count for 60% of the grade in classwork and homework. I just didn't, those didn't seem to match to me. I, I don't know if you could explain that or?
Our, what our intent was, and based off kind of the common practice of teachers with their grade books, is to kind of create this category that represented if we were in school, what would they do in your class that you would collect or grade or look at? What would they do for homework? What kind of questions might you ask that you would give them a grade, whether it's oral questions or whatever, as a way to assess progress in their learning? And actually, that's something that we changed for clarity in our meeting this morning. The category has kind of changed, now it says classwork slash homework assignments. So basically, it's any assignment or any way that a teacher is checking if a student learned. And then the second bullet was changed to say, "Used as a gauge of students' learning progress towards meeting the priority standards," which is a formative assessment, like how, how are they coming along in this?
But it's gonna count for 60% of their overall final grade?
Yes.
So it's really not formative then?
Depends how you...
We don't need to get into weeds on this right now.
It depends how you would grade it. For example, if you, how, the difference between how you would grade a draft of a paper versus how you would grade the final essay. And that would be kind of a teacher's discretion.
Okay.
Anyone else for the middle school?
Excuse me, I think...
Sorry.
What the intent was, was to make sure it was beyond just assigning work and to try to add some rigor and some meat to, oh, the entire experience.
Okay, and feedback, you said too?
Yes, and feedback, with feedback.
Mike?
All right. And again, sorry if I'm getting mixed up between middle school and high school, but did I read that, that grading, I'm sorry, absences will not be graded?
We are not going, in our plan last spring, attendance was worth 10 or 20% as students would just check in, kind of do, it was almost like a participation grade last time. We wanted to separate that out, we had a, a good discussion about, you know, the difference between a child who shows up and does this in your class all day versus a kid who just kind of, you know, doesn't show up at all. What's the difference? And we need to be accountable in terms of our record keeping, so we want to make sure that students who at least sign in for remote learning get some, get acknowledgement that they showed up, they walked in the door for the day, versus a teacher checking on a student's learning, engaging them in some kind of other activity, some kind of participation grade, to, to see how engaged they are in the class.
Yeah, it looked like you were being pretty, pretty clever there, so you're not grading on, on absences, but, but you are counting 15% on the participation, so you gotta, if you're not there, you're not participating, you know, right?
Correct.
So also, so under grading, hold on here, this is, it says Power School will be set to record, well, this is, work not turned in, recorded as NHI, that's what, not handed in?
Not handed in, yes. It's a code that Power School uses already, and most teachers, if a student, if a student doesn't do their work, teachers have options, they can write missing, not handed in, NHI, or give them, give the student a zero. But we've been finding that the zeros, you know, a student can do a lot of work and miss one, one assignment, they're absent, whatever, and that zero is really impactful on their average. So we wanted to say, to let parents know and to let administrators know that when we'd, someone looked at what this, these, this student's grade was, the NHI, they didn't even do it.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're not gonna penalize them and give them a zero, we're gonna kind of keep them in the ballgame with a, with a 50%, which is still an F.
Okay, all right. And then, so it says, another bullet item says, "Provide clarity to parents," like, what is?
We just wanted to, that's, we're not gonna use the missing comment, we're not gonna record it as zero, we're gonna be consistent in terms of, all teachers will use NHI when a student doesn't hand in an assignment.
All right, thank you.
Also?
Yeah.
I, I, that was a question that I had too, because I know, I saw on your document there was some discussion between people about, well, should we give them 50? Why, no, it should be a zero. So is that something that you're still?
No, we, we kind of came to a good consensus on that, that, you know, if a student doesn't do anything, you know, if they don't hand it in, they get the NHI, it records as 50%. If a student, say, for some reason, didn't finish the assignment or did it very badly, you know, wrote three words for an essay and had a grade that was below 50%, what the teacher could do is write in, is type in a 50% as a grade and then note, you can put comments in Power School, so they would leave a note that said, "Actual grade, 43, raised to a 50."
Okay, okay. April?
I, as a mom who had to chase Power School, both when my son was in the middle school and at the high school, I love that. I appreciate all the work you guys are doing, but, and with the absences, I, I definitely think that, is it gonna be just middle school or are you guys kind of, whereas you have some, you know, the, getting that consistency of those kids that will soon be going to, you know, to the high school, and just in Power School in general, obviously, I'm assuming that some of the things will stay kind of similarly, but with the, the at-home, the, I had like, for example, my son would do his work, but missed the, the, the thread where they were supposed to check in for, say, attendance. So is that something that's gonna be a little bit more consistent, both at, like district-wide, where on those remote learning days, is it gonna be something separate for attendance? Or is it gonna be looked for work turned in on a particular day to count for attendance? Because like, I was getting messages, like, he wasn't in class, he wasn't in class, but he had maybe turned in the work, but missed the thread where they log in. So I don't know if other students were having that same kind of issue, if that's any feedback that you got. And similarly, with the, the not handed in or the missing, I think that that distinction, because as a parent, when I'm chasing my student to, and I look at the, as you all know, I check Power School like it's my job, six times a day, because, you know, you'll have the student saying, "I handed that in," but then it's a zero, I think having that distinction for that either it's not handed in or it's incomplete is definitely gonna be a huge help to the parents that are helping their kids at home and trying to help them stay accountable, to help you guys make sure that they're doing the best that they can. So I think that that's huge, but with the attendance piece of it, is that something that you guys are gonna continue to have something as a separate, like a, almost like a check-in, like a login, or is it gonna be by assignment, or is it every class different, or is it gonna be the same across the board?
Actually, we modeled ours after the high school. A parent on our commi, a teacher on our committee, also a parent of a student at the high school, said, you know, the high school was great for each class, they had a form, they just went and filled out, the high school doesn't have homerooms, we have homeroom where we take daily attendance. So we said, well, we're gonna almost have like a virtual homeroom. We'll use a similar form to what the high school used, so that every day, a student would have from midnight to midnight to check in and just complete that form, which is just really, what's your name, what's, like...
Yeah, but like I had to chase my child to do that.
Right.
But he would do the wor, the assignment, because in his head, and I don't know if this is part of his, you know, being on a 504 and things work a little differently, his head, if, if I'm doing the assignment, I'm in school for the day, so he was missing that piece of it. So I didn't know if that was anything you guys, other people besides me having to chase that heard any feedback on with that piece, either at the high school or the middle school. I love that it's gonna be consistent between both buildings, I think that will set even just future things, it gets them in that routine to hopefully never, to always trust Power School and, you know, kind of keep everything consistent, but I would just, my concern is the attendance piece, for some kids that may miss that, or, I know that, you know, you're able to go backwards and kind of retro-do it, but I mean, I was looking at it at one day, and it looked like, I got an email from a teacher saying, "My kid hasn't been in school and done anything, or attendance in two weeks," but I could see his stuff was graded. So I think that that disconnect on, at least with my kid, was an issue, so I don't, I just wanna make sure that there's a way, possibly, that if a teacher is accepting an assignment for that child and they didn't log in on that day in the attendance, is there like a way to look at that correlation so that that child's not getting absent, 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 because at the end of the year, I think Power School will do like that.
No credit.
The no credit, and that could be impactful, I know that sometimes too, if, if sports are able to continue, the absences play a part in that, and, you know, all these other things where their absences can kind of contribute to anything else or how other things are reflected, just to see if there's a way to like cross-check almost, all right, well, this kid signed in as a, as a, you know, didn't hit the attendance form, but turned in their math homework or their essay or whatever, so is there a way, you know?
I think the tough part is, the tough part is that you have some classes that may not have an assignment every day, so to use the theory that an assignment is equal to attendance, which I agree with your son, by the way, the assignment's way more important than the attendance.
[laughing]
So we can figure out that attendance thing afterwards, but I think that's the difficult part, is that, you know, the, and, and the attendance was utilized so we could track how many kids were online, who was, you know, and have the deans work on the kids that maybe aren't checking in and doing their work. So it, it is difficult, but to your point, there are some classes, you know, math class there's probably an assignment every day that's turned in, right?
Right.
Maybe not in English, but probably in, you know, science class there would be. So it, it's just, there's not a consistent flow to use that, that program to say, okay, the assignment equals the attendance, but, you know, like Sandy said, it's, it's, you know, it's new to us, we're, we're always tweaking it, we're always looking to improve it, and, you know, we'll continue to look at it when and if that's the direction we go in.
Sure, and I do have to say that all of the teachers were amazing in reaching out, at least to me, so the communication piece with the kids being home, at least in my experience, has been wonderful, so I know that you guys have been doing, you know, in uncharted waters, doing the absolute best that you can, and I couldn't be more proud to have a child in our district, so.
Additionally, our intent was also, because we're going to use this kind of virtual homeroom, students have the day to kind of check in, they, assignments will be posted weekly and not due till the following Sunday, but we still want them to check in every day, but we also plan on having Power School, just like if your student didn't physically come to school, you get the phone call, your child's not in school. Our thought is, if your child doesn't sign in the next day, because they have until midnight, the next day you would get a call saying, "Your child did not sign into school yesterday."
Okay.
That allows, and then disseminate that information to administration, to, to teachers, so that, you know, if we have a common student, I can say, well, he was in my class, but you know he didn't do your work and we know he did check in. So just to kind of track them a little better.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. So is there anything that we haven't asked you questions about that are changes from the last time that you wanna share with us?
I don't think so. We had a quick meeting, oh, the only thing that the committee wanted to add is at the end of the document to say, "This document may be amended by the Learning Plan Subcommittee or due to changing state DESI or district guidelines and directives."
Okay.
That, you know, it's a fluid plan.
Yes, yes, okay. So I guess my only other question would be, what would, what is the difference between remote learning in the spring and remote learning in the fall at the middle school?
Our focus as we've, all summer, and even last year when it was happening with remote learning, was how do we go past assigning work and really get down to the business of teaching? And that was really our focus, how do we make sure? We've had all the departments define their priority standards, departments are going to go week by week, this is the standard we're working on, this is how we're gonna assess it at the end of the week or at the end of two weeks. So we wanted to add a lot of rigor in actual teaching and learning rather than just review and assign... Um, so we wanted to add a lot of rigor in actual teaching and learning, rather than just review and assigning work. And I think that that's probably the biggest change, is we've really moved our focus.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Um,
All right, oh, Mike, go ahead.
Um, I guess a question to all of you, and maybe just the superintendent. In, in the hybrid model, would, would, would school committee members still be able to, you know, maybe tour? You know, and, and check it out and see what's going on?
To what?
To tour.
Oh, tour? Um, yeah, we'd have to talk about that, because we're going to be pretty stringent about who we let in the buildings.
Yeah. So is that a no, or?
Yeah, pretty much.
It's pretty much a no?
We'll zoom you in.
Well, I would say if parents aren't allowed in the building, yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, but we're not parents, not really, right?
No, 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 but.
Um, and, and I'm, I'm curious, during remote learning, that, with the hybrid model, I guess even so, what are, what are, like, the paras working on at that time?
They're lending support as well to the students. So I had paras doing a variety thing. They were reading stories, um, and it was posted in the Google Classroom. I had paras assigned to small groups, so they were working with students, with the teacher via Zoom.
So, so separately, not, not in a Zoom session with the teacher, they have their own Zoom session, working with students?
Some did. It was both.
I think that's great.
With the teachers, and if we knew somebody was really struggling, we assigned a particular task.
That's, so, so that's like, kind of like tier two?
We have, yeah, we also would have the ability to do breakout rooms. So if a, a group of students were having a problem in a class, then the para could break out into a room and work with the student in the small room within the context of the larger class.
Well, that's, that's great, because I've been talking to someone from another district who would love to be able to do that, but I, I think their union is like really not supporting that, but that's great if that's happening.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, so we'll move on to the high school.
All right. So as Mr. Flaherty mentioned, we kind of took a look at, uh, the numbers of what it would look like if we were to have a hybrid model with two cohort groups. And, uh, so we, we discussed that a little bit earlier. The, that's one change. Um, just, we enhanced the special ed piece, and at the high school, most of the paras are assigned to a one-on-one. So, um, exactly as Joan described, is kind of what would happen, and more specifically, um, we would identify struggling students as well, and have them work individually, one-on-one for at least an hour a week. Uh, one-on-one through a Zoom with those kids if we were online. So that there's a, I think, they feel very fulfilled and involved, which is obviously important, but in the meantime, the students are getting a tremendous amount of support that they otherwise might not get in a traditional classroom setting, so it, it works out really well.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we, um, kind of planted the seed for a potential online, even while doing a hybrid, which was discussed, I think, in one line in the previous plan. There's a little bit more detail, but certainly not enough to run with at this point in time. And, um, again, just, uh, with both models, really identifying how the Special Education Department would be involved in that, and specifically what kids we would bring back um, that are in specialized programs to be in school for the full four days, not for a two-day rotation, if we were to go with the hybrid. So those are really the only changes, nothing too crazy, uh, from the high school, um, but certainly, uh, willing to answer any questions you may have.
Mike?
So, so there was an interesting blurb, I think it was only in yours, uh, about that all the bathrooms are going to be open?
Which, which is, that is unique, because usually they're not all open, for supervisory reasons.
They're not usually open, all of them?
No, we, because we want to make sure we're supervising the bathrooms, um, we have to just identify one bathroom that has, you know, male and female, obviously, one area bathroom that's open per period. So to, to mitigate a lot of the traffic that we don't want to have happen, we have, the nice thing is when they built the school, they built a bathroom pretty much in every quadrant of the school. So we'd be able to have the flexibility of having those bathrooms open.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Good to hear that the bathrooms are open. This is great.
Anyone else for the high school?
To you, but this can also go to any of the principals as well. I've asked this before, and so I'm still, like, if people ask me, how is this going to work, I guess I'll ask you the same question. So if teachers have a group in front of them Monday and Tuesday, and they are teaching Monday and Tuesday to their group, and they have a separate group they're teaching Wednesday and Thursday, what are the lessons that the students are getting while the teachers are teaching? Uh, is this something that's been prepared ahead of time by all staff? Is it independent of what's going on in that class, or in conjunction to?
Hopefully it's aligned with what's going on.
Expanding, or previewing, or both?
Hopefully it's aligned with what's going on. So in other words, um, I, I guess it would kind of be like the, the backwards design, where the, the, the kids that are there, there's one aspect that they're working on, but then the kids that aren't are working on a different aspect, and then we kind of just cross on the, on the Thursday, Friday on that. So that's the hope. It's going to require a tremendous amount of training and planning for our staff, obviously, because it's almost like a prep and a half, if you will, for that class, because, again, half the students are going to be there on Monday, Tuesday, and the other half on Thursday, Friday. Um, but, you know, it's, uh, and there's different models that, obviously, there's a lot that would have to be negotiated. Um, synchronous, asynchronous.
Do you envision them teaching the same lesson Monday, Tuesday, that they're teaching Tuesday, Friday to the kids, or different?
No.
Lessons?
It, it still needs to be really negotiated. Um, I, I mean, I have my theory on how I'd like it to go, but certainly that there has to be a lot of work done, I, I think, once the decision is made on what.
So if we decide that, then, then we really got to get into the details, and how you, how you guys do it?
You described it. You know, we really need to get in the weeds once, and, and I'm super excited for next Thursday, because I know, when I walk out of here, we'll, we'll have an idea of what we're doing, and then we can really focus on one plan instead of potentially three.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else?
Glad you're super excited.
Well, just because, you know, the, I just, you know how, you know how it is as a principal? You, you want to have everything ready for day one, and, you know, you have a routine that you work every summer, and our routine has been turned upside down. You know, there's so many things that are up in the air. At this point in time, and I think I speak for all the principals, we are at a point where we kind of know what we're doing. We know the student schedules, we have the schedules, we have all the supply, you know, we have everything in order. Um, the only thing we're ahead of the game on is cleaning classrooms, which is good.
Thank you. All right, so my pages are out of order, but I was hoping to get some more information on option 3B, where said remote for select students?
Sure. So we anticipate if we go hybrid, there's going to be a percentage of students that would like to opt out of that for, you know, pre, um, health conditions they may have, um, concerns with family members, things of that nature. So, um, that's something that we would like to, uh, have as an option. We surveyed the students, we have about 200 students that surveyed. Eighty percent of them can't wait to come back, by the way. And, uh, 20% uh, would like to, um, look into the online option if it was possible. So I think there's a percentage of kids that could excel in something like this if we had a hybrid, and it also could get our numbers down to, I think, much more manageable numbers in the classrooms, and, and maybe get us to that six-foot threshold that we were talking about earlier.
But it's, it sounds like, you know, people get caught up with the semantics, and they want, they say they want to homeschool their kids, but I think what they really want to do is this. You know, they want to be home fully remote while everybody else is, you know, some, you know, it's appropriate for some, some students. So I guess that, that's, that, that, with the hybrid model, what, what, do you think that'll be in place?
I, I think it could be, and if that's something that, uh, we wanted to look at, I think it, it would be very helpful for some families. There, there were a lot of kids that did really well online.
Right, right.
And kids that traditionally may not have done as well, really did well online. So it, it does speak to, I think, all, some students, a percentage of students, but certainly high school students, it seemed to be a, a higher number of students that really excelled with the online.
Yeah, so I had asked you, Dr. Shaverhood, if that would be an option. I mean, will it be an option?
Yes, yes. Right now, we're asking, uh, for information from staff who are not able to return due to medical reasons, but would like to, uh, work on the online piece. What we need to do is to see where people fall in. So at the secondary level, it's very important that we have a balance of staff that are working online, so we can facilitate math, English, et cetera. At the elementary, it's not so great, uh, because it's not subject area. So what we will be looking at doing is to provide options for parents. If they choose not to send their student back to school, we will have a remote piece that they could opt into for full-time.
So we will?
Yes.
That, that's good, that's, that's great.
I mean, DESI has said that we will work with parents, so.
And I, I think the nice thing is, obviously, Dr. Shaverhood gave an example of maybe a teacher that couldn't come back, but we also have teachers that can come back and are healthy enough to come back, but they are interested in teaching one section online.
Yeah.
So that could be a possibility as well. And, and as Dr. Shaverhood said, it's content-specific at the high school, so we would need multiple teachers to, to do this.
Yeah, she answered my question. I mean, so, you mean, the pool of teachers is going to be pretty finite that want to do that, or, or have to do that, and do you get stuck with the history teacher teaching math, you know?
No, 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 we can't do that. It would have, it would have to be content-specific teachers.
So.
And we do have, uh, an online, uh, option as well, that some students take through a, a venue that we use. So if we got in a situation where there weren't enough teachers to teach a certain class, we could use that online venue for one class.
Hmm.
What is the plan for the pass program?
Right now, they're going to be, um, online as they were in March.
Okay.
There'll be a couple teachers facilitate, as they did, but that's how we will start.
Okay.
So I'll ask you, Scott, my question. I suspect I know the answer, but what would be the difference?
Well, I, I think the biggest difference is that the students and the staff are going to be, um, more experienced in this. Um, you know, this was very new in the spring, and, you know, we had a week, well, we had more than a week, but we basically were able to put it together in a few weeks. And, uh, and it, it went well. Obviously, there's always room for improvement. So I think familiarity will be the, the, the first thing that I would say. Um, I think we'll have, you know, we've got plenty of time to plan this out. We've been working on it, obviously, for, for weeks. And, uh, once we have that direction to go in, I think you'll see more traditional grading. Um, there was, uh, in the spring, a little more allowance for, a little more flexibility, uh, in grading, and expectations were a little bit less. I think you'll see a ramped-up expectation. I think what's going to be nice is, um, if we do go, you know, hybrid to online, or online to hybrid, whatever it is, I think that you'll see the mode of teaching will be the same. So there won't be that transition to traditional classroom setting to online. The traditional classroom setting will now incorporate a lot of online mechanisms, if you will, in the classroom. So I think the transition, whichever way it goes, will be much more palatable for all, and most importantly, for the students. So I think those would be the, the biggest changes that you'll see in the high school, and, and hopefully, um, the confusion that some kids had at the beginning with whether it be attendance or expectations, um, will be, um, well-versed to, to all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions of any of the principals?
No question, but I just, I know that usually, you know, all of you get a little bit of a break in July and August, and I just want to, you know, greatly thank all of you for all the time, the dedication, um, between all of the principals, the administrators, the, the parents that have been in these, um, you know, kind of tactical groups to help you guys organize, the janitors and the, the nurses and everybody, the cafeteria, who have put their input in and their time that they would normally have off, to make sure that we have the best option to educate our kids. And it just shows just how much you guys care, and it's, I, it's not unnoticed at all. So I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we could pull this together for you, and so when we began, we, we've looked at three options. We've looked at remote, hybrid, and face-to-face. Okay, next, next slide. One thing that we agree upon throughout this whole process, when we looked at, um, working with our, our, um, committees, because we formed them at the district and building level, it's very important for us that this is driven by our staff. Our staff has ownership in this plan. The plans have been vetted and re-vetted. We've had workshops with the school committee. We've put surveys out to parents, and then you'll be voting on August 6th. To update you on the parent survey, right now, I just checked a few minutes ago, we've had 706 parents respond, and really, the face-to-face changed by one-tenth. It's 28.5. The hybrid went up by one-tenth. It's 36.7, and remote has stayed the same at 34.8. So, the one thing that we have said all along is safety, next slide. Safety is our number one priority. When we look at all of the factors, um, that are going to occur when we come back to school, we agree upon a shortened school day would be very beneficial to both our students and our staff. We also agree upon relationships must be formed between teachers and students immediately. That is vital. And then we, we know some of our students must return in a face-to-face model. Some of our need, neediest students. So when we began working on this, we've, we have had various considerations. One would be, um, staggered start times. We also have been looking at the remote school option for students that do not want to return, or parents who do not want their children to return to school. The commissioner recently agreed to an extra 10 days of professional development. When talking with our staff, one of the things that has been very important to them is a gradual start. So we would propose for your consideration that we would start our student date, where we would start the 170-day count on September 16th. At that point, we would start bringing students in, in a small, with very small numbers, into working with their teachers, getting to know them. More importantly, learning the, um, teach-tos. How do we wear masks? How do we line up? How do, what are the parameters that we have to work under? And that would occur in small groups. It also does a couple of other things for us. One of our concerns is the heat in September, with students wearing masks and staff wearing masks for, for a period of time. This would get us through some of the hottest back-to-school months. We'd be into October. It also allows us a little bit more time to make sure that all of our staff are on the same page when it comes to expectations. Because, April, you asked the question, what are we going to do when students don't want to wear the mask, or don't want to follow protocol? I think one of the essential pieces for us is, everybody must be on the same page and have the same rules across the board. I cannot have one teacher who says, oh yeah, that's okay, no problem, but another teacher becoming very upset. We have to be consistent, and we have to agree to that consistency. Our job is to keep kids safe, and for that to happen, everybody must follow the protocols. We also then would be looking at making some school adjustment to the calendar. We may need to look at professional development days as we go through, or we may need to do a little bit of adjustment. I don't know that right now. One thing that we did hear that was just like, I thought, oh, this is great, today in the, um, commissioner's Zoom, that if we're remote and we need a snow day, it could count. That's the first positive thing I've heard. So, you know, we have that flexibility. So moving to the next slide, the non-negotiables, and I've really touched on that. It's, safety protocols must be followed. It's, there's just nothing that I could say, other than it's non-negotiable. And everyone needs to understand what they are, staff, student, parents, et cetera, and we all must follow them. So my recommendations for your consideration would be, the school adjustment, um, calendar needs to reflect 170 days. Transportation, no variances granted this year, and it would be consistent. We would recommend for the hybrid model to be adjusted, but we would also ask for an adjustment in the school day hours with a four-hour time period, and we would be remote the rest of the day. Now, this allows us to do a couple of things. This allows us to send food home with the students for This allows us to send food home with the students for lunch, and we will not need to serve lunch in the classroom. This eliminates one of our concerns about how are we going to feed students without masks if we can't make the six-feet rule? It also helps us with some cleaning issues and other concerns that would result out of that. We would send breakfast home with students so when they come into the building, we're ready to go with time on learning. We would recommend that students attend school in a two-day cohort, meaning there'd be a group of kids coming on Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday is a deep-clean day. Another group would come in on Thursday and Friday, with Friday afternoon or Saturday as a deep-clean day. We have all agreed at every, in every building, that there is a high-need population that may need to attend school four days a week. There may be another group that needs to attend three days a week, but that's where we need to step back, listen to our professionals, and make the adjustment there and make it work for our students. So we know our teachers need professional development. Dr. Schwam has been working with a group of people, our teachers, educators, on providing professional development. If you would, you want to share briefly some of the, what's been going on behind the scenes?
Oh, it's busy. Let's see. Essentially, you know, you asked the difference between remote and hybrid, and there really, we have to design remote to be hybrid. You can't really do hybrid without remote because it could, so essentially, no matter what we do, it has to be engaging and rigorous and robust in either or both categories. And in order to keep it fluid and going, moving ahead, so that we're not continuously on a backward loop, we have to make sure that what we're doing moves, hybrid, remote, whatever, and that we're meeting the standards. So we've done a lot of work on how we're presenting that information. We're fortunate to be part of this modern teacher group that has a landing page, basically, and that every teacher or department will have a landing page that gives all of the information in the same format, for the most part, for parents and students to be able to, they know exactly where to go. So there's no, what's my code? How do I get here? Where's this? Where's that? Right? Those questions are all sort of vetted right on that page. From there, we're doing playlists and learning plans. And so those will be part of, and they integrate very nicely into Google Classroom, which is our online, our, basically, the system that we're all very familiar with. So that's going on. And then we have the social-emotional component being taken care of by Polly Bath, who was here last year for a day, and the staff just raved about her. She was here for the January in-service day, and she works with trauma and behavior and things like that. But she's also very cued into all that's going on now. And I think that will be very important for our staff and our students, and she'll be integrating herself in with small groups throughout the year, which is nice. So it's not a one-shot deal, basically. I don't like those one-shot professional developments. So that's going on. I'm working with Terry DeFilippo, who's so skilled at Google Classroom and things like that. And together, we are actually providing professional development in the model that we would ask teachers to provide their learning. So I'm pushing the envelope with my knowledge and learning a lot, but I think it'll be a really good way to present, saying, here, you go, you know, well, I have, we have a landing page. We have a playlist. We're going to, and we have a whole bunch of things that we're going to offer them over time. So it's been really busy and exciting, and hopefully, it will all, it will be good for people, right? Because we just want them to feel comfortable. So, yeah.
So we will enter into discussions with the WEA starting next week so we can come to an agreement on what this is going to look like as far as the unions. I've had discussions with each union this week about the different components that may be affected at each, with each group, and so we're working through any issues. And I appreciate everybody working in a collaborative basis, which they have been. So our next steps really are, you're going to be voting on August 6th for a plan or plans. We then will be contacting parents and guardians to find out what their preference is. Will they choose a remote? Or would they go with the hybrid in the model that has been suggested and voted, voted upon? We then will need a commitment from staff of returning to school, and we will be developing MOAs with any associations that we need to make some adjustments in their contract. And of course, the work does not end for our schools. At that point, we'll get into the weeds and we start the nitty-gritty work. We look at what we need to have in place to open our doors. We've been doing some HVAC investigations in our buildings. We have hired a company to come in and over, to go through the high school HVAC, and I'm expecting to be given any time, what's wrong with it and the cost, as well as we've had people come in and look at our HVAC at the middle school and at Deacon's about cleaning, what that cost would be. We're looking at, then moving ahead, we need to make orders of furniture because we need to get certain pieces in. And our list probably goes on and on and on. But the key to us at this point now, we started with lots and lots of information, and slowly we've been funneling it down to the point now where we've, we're turning it over to you for you to make your decision. So if you have questions during the next week, please reach out. Happy to provide you with whatever you need, but I know this is a big decision that you will be making.
So just to be very clear, when we, when we say we're voting on a plan, what you're proposing is your plan to start remote to a hybrid model in October?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
But it's not remote, but still bringing kids in during those first three weeks?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. And so in the hybrid model, the day is shorter, but you won't be serving lunch, you won't be serving breakfast. So how much time will be lost in the school day?
Well, that's something that we would figure out, but what our expectation is then for the rest of the school day, there will be remote going on. So we will still be able to clock the minute, time on learning minutes. We cannot make our 170 days plus the time on learning commitment if we do not do remote during that time.
No, I wasn't implying that you would. I just, it's probably not as much time as it seems when you take out lunch and breakfast.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. We're hoping for four, four hours, essentially. So we'll lose two, but then they'll gain the two at home with their, with the remote.
Okay. April, have you any first?
With that, I know, like, for, for the high school, for example, with the choice of, with the younger kids, they have their core classes for the most part, but when you start getting into electives with the four-hour day and the fact that the high school has a, a four-day rotating schedule, how is that going to play into, are certain electives going to be, like, say, for example, like, say you have a small size, is that going to be some, some things be, like, remote only for certain electives and do the core classes as, within that four-hour block for those two days? Like, just because the high school is in a different situation with the, the electives and the, how many classes, especially like when you start getting into, you know, you have your dual enrollment students with Bridgewater that are essentially from, until noon, are taking classes remote, through Bridgewater State. How is that going to play into their, you know, in-person class time, at least for the high school?
So the, for the hybrid model or even for online, you know, let's go with the hybrid first. We'll have the kids in, they'll have their four classes one day, they'll have their four classes in the next day, and then there'll be supplementation that's done through the online process in the afternoon. As far as, when we go, starting full online, we'll have, obviously, a rotation like we normally would. So you have day, as you mentioned, day A. You have the four classes, day B, the four. The electors will still be there. Those are still part of the, you know, the mass core requirements for graduation, so they're still going to be there. But that's how it would look.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
All right. So you had mentioned the snow days can be used as remote days. And interestingly, I think, I think I might have only, I think I might have only seen it in the high school plan, but I think you mentioned holidays can be done on Wednesdays?
So, now, again, I think I prefaced everything would have to be negotiated, obviously, but it's tough in the fall. There's a lot of Monday holidays, as we all know. And there was only one, no, I'm sorry, I think there were two holidays or two Mondays, Memorial Day and maybe Good Fri, maybe it was Good, no, it wasn't Good. There were two holidays that we had to deal with, if you will.
Columbus Day?
No, in the spring, there were two holidays we had to deal with, with the online remote learning. So one thing that was tough was that the, it seemed to impact the same class both days based on the rotation that we had pre-established.
Yeah.
So just that, you know, a thought, again, everything has to be, you know, obviously vetted, but it's tough when you miss, you know, if you're going to do Monday, Tuesday, those classes are going to be penalized with, you know, you got Columbus, obviously, Labor Day is not an issue now, but Columbus Day, Veterans Day, and it could be an in-service day as well, I think.
So what would need to be negotiated if they had the Monday off and you're still supposed to work on Wednesday, right? I mean, what needs to be negotiated?
I just think it needs to be, you need to collaborate.
Huh?
They're remote on Wednesday. Yeah.
Right, but, but they're still working, right? I mean, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
I just think you want to get people involved in that conversation.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think a principal should be saying, we're going to do this on, you know, you want, you want the team process to happen.
You wish.
And then, can we go back one more slide? Yeah.
Sure. Glad I catch it.
All right, so the hybrid, the third item, hybrid model adopted with an adjusted school day, four hours face-to-face, then remote the remainder of day. Has that been fully vetted with the principals? It has? All right. Yes? All right. So it's not news to anybody?
I didn't surprise them. That, that didn't surprise them.
I, I thought.
They've been asking.
Okay. Oh, good, good. All right. And, and so earlier today, we took a look at those two classrooms. One was like, you know, three foot apart, one was six foot apart. Our vote wouldn't have any impact on that. That would be a decision, you know, by the schools, however they want to figure that out.
Right. Our goal is, if we could do a six-foot, get everybody in in the hybrid model in the cohorts, we definitely would go six feet. That's just not an issue.
Yeah, you know, and, and, you know, there's opportunities here. I mean, even, 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 even with the other one, the three-foot, that's a fif, that was a 15-person classroom. I think the middle school would beg for that on any given day, right? You know, so, so that, you know, it's good and bad. And I think that's all I got.
The only other thing that comes to mind, and I know that everyone is really aware of this, is I, I feel for the parents who, of the kindergarten students and the grade four students and the grade eight students. I missed, I missed one school, who the kids are going to a new school. So I just, and I know everyone is aware of that. So that parent piece will be even more important than it, than, than ever. Yeah. Okay, thank you. So we'll move on?
Okay.
Okay. Move on to the report of the superintendent.
Right. In the newsletter, you received a list of payroll and bills. I would ask that you approve all of the payrolls and bills listed in the newsletter.
Is there a motion to approve?
Just, when was the newsletter sent?
I think it was sent...
It was in with the documents.
This morning.
This mor, all right.
Yeah.
The workshop packet.
It was not sent yesterday in the workshop. It was sent, yeah, today. I'd read them, except there's an awfully lot. I'd be happy to read them if you would like, but...
No, thank you.
No.
Okay, thanks.
No, I get it. I just, that's fine.
Do you want to see it?
No, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained, just because I didn't have a moment to look at it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So 4-0-1.
Okay. And then I would ask for the gifts to be approved. Gift certificates to Charlie's Place for $40 for, for virtual bingo. Gift certificates to Cool Cone totaling $100 for virtual bingo. Ford family passes to the YMCA, $112 value for virtual bingo. Stop &amp; Shop A+ awards totaling $630.51 for the high school. And AT&amp;T, $2 to the high school. So I would ask that you please approve those gifts.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So 5-0-0.
Okay.
We always like to say a big thank you for accepting those gifts. Very grateful to the community.
And then finally, I would just remind people of graduation for the alternative school. It's tomorrow night, the PASS program. I believe it is at 4 o'clock, it's 4:00 here at the Multi Service Center, and it will be a drive-by graduation. And then we have graduation next Friday night, ticket only, and it will be at the high school field, Spillane Field.
Okay.
And that, and that just reminded me, was, were we going to do some sort of an awards thing too, or was that canceled?
So the, many of the awards will be mentioned at graduation. Just, we're trying to have one ceremony, but there is going to be next week some ceremonies that traditionally we would have in person. They'll be on WCTV, and I'll make sure I give the kids the information, the families the information on the airing times for both of those.
So you don't know the time yet?
Not sure the time, but it will be, we'll publicize it early next week as far as the times. We'll get those out to the parents and the students.
Okay. It is like the lot of, you know, athletic awards and stuff like that.
Athletic and academics. And, and both those will be intertwined in the graduation, but obviously, we can't do the full ceremony. We'll be there all night.
Right, yeah. And while we're on the superintendent report...
Sure.
But I did get the email today, you know, the packet, and I did happen to see the, the vacancy listings, and if I could just ask something about it and just let me know if I should take it offline, that's fine, but, but I noticed the, the notice of vacancies in-house, there's five department chairpersons? Like, five department chairpersons? What's, are those positions that we're bringing back or what?
No, that's something that needs to be posted every year.
Okay, I was, yeah, we're all confused about, that makes a lot of sense then. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I had a question about the same thing. I know it says Assistant Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent District, but I believe we've filled that with Jamie, correct? So is that just, it just got left on there, so?
Well, you haven't received any information since before any of this had been posted, and that's why that was included.
Okay. I was just checking because I was like, oh, no, is she temporary? I hope not. She's doing a great job. Thank you.
Okay. All set? So before entering the meeting, I just want to say again how much, all the hard work is appreciated and acknowledge all the hard work that's going on, not just by the people in this room, especially by the people in this room, but also the people in the buildings, the parents, everyone who's participating in all of the planning that's happening. Just a, a big thank you. And with that, we'll take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0.